Order at 6 o'clock, roll call please.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
James Burton is absent. Ken Jones? You on the phone, Kenny? Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer? Absent. David Allison?
Here.
James Wees?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So the topic for tonight's work session is alternative revenues discussion. And I'll turn it over to Manager Lanning.
All right, you ready to go again? Anybody on the phone?
Apparently not. Oh, am I supposed to turn that on?
The light's on, but it's not.
The light's on.
Which mic number is it?
Um, I'm on.
Room B, mic one.
But you're room B. Mic one? Room B, mic one. Oh, I, how about that? That sounds warm.
Did we hear who we had on the line?
Here. Nobody, it was just us. Kenny Jones said he'd be calling. Maybe he's not.
Thanks, Larry. All right, I'm always, I'm sorry to put this all on the board again, but I like to have it. I think I think through it better visually when I have it written up here. You know, the discussion tonight is supposed to be about revenue, but if you don't mind, I'm going to backtrack a little bit because, you know, I think you'll take any path of, I don't mean you as a council, just generically, people will take any path if they don't know where they're going. So I'm going to try to reiterate where we're going. And if there's anybody on the phone, Tina sent a picture of the board to you. So I'm going to begin with fiscal year 2018. We've been through this a number of times. And I'd like to walk through it again. As you can see, our approved general fund budget for '18 was $10,374,000. You can see the standard deductions that we take out of this, this amount between debt service, school district, CCMC, and that's listed in the budget at 625, even though we had a $50,000 swing, there was 575, but I'm just going by what we have in the budget. So 4.174 million, that in all likelihood is never going to leave us. Unless we have, you know, we've been working on issues with the hospital and so forth, and you know, that's a pretty dramatic model, so we're, but we're working on that. So for the time being, we're always operating on a shorter term plan instead of a longer term plan at this point. Leaves us 6,200. The general fund personnel costs are about 4.2 million. That is down from where it used to be, and it looks like that number's even going to be south of that this year primarily because we have positions that haven't been filled and our workers' compensation rate went down. So that's going to cost us less. But let's just say for, for sakes, that status quo, 4.2 million. Now, we can always reduce that through staff reductions, and we talked about that, or, you know, we've talked about a variety of things. Leaves us 2 million bucks. Of course, we're down 200,000 to start with because the election in May overturned our two revenue sources that we estimated would produce $330,000. $300,000. So I'm just assuming that five months into it, we collected 100,000. That's probably too high, but let's just, it's easier to figure that way. That leaves $1.8 million for us to run everything that we do. Out of that $1,800, we spent 160,000 on in-kind and $223,000 goes to cover all of our, all of our things that we operate our city on.
Is that Kenny?
Kenny, is that you? Somebody on the line?
Or Ann, maybe, I don't, I don't.
Okay. Out of that 1.8 million, we have already approved 135,000 for the gym floor. We have some issues with the gym floor that this cost is likely to go up, we just don't know how much. I don't know what information this school has gotten out there, so I won't say that. We have talked about spending 125,000 on the comp plan. And as I've mentioned a couple of times, the UPS, the hospital, costs more than the 117,000 that was budgeted. I just put that number in there. So right away, we're chipping 305 in the red. We don't know what our fish tax is going to be this year. We got the timber receipts. Because we've had a lot of conversation about, you know, the 716,000 that we got in '17 for the fish tax. I'll get to that in a minute. Looking forward to next year, there's, there's, there's three big questions in our budget. Number one is sales tax. We budgeted 3.5 million, that's the most we've ever budgeted in sales tax in the history of the town. It's 200,000 above the 3.3 million that is above our record. So being optimistic, that could change. Let's just say we had 3 million, 3.3 million, we're 200 down. School district needs more, hospital needs more. These numbers have the ability to fluctuate. That's the importance of not connecting this initial fish tax number with extra money in the budget. In '19, given all the same factors, minus the revenue, to start with, $300,000 down, we're at 5.9 million, minus 4.2 in personnel. We're down to 1.7, covering operations, facilities, and equipment. All of that, maintenance and purchases and all that stuff have to come out of that. Again, we're doing our 160,000 in-kind, 223,000 to cover all of our, our stuff that we do that, where we have to buy stuff. You know, maintenance items, facilities items, tools, improvements, all of those things. So looking out to 2020, everything is the same. But you know, the, the school district, let's say they go to 1.8 because they have a need, they ask us for more money, and you wish to grant that. But we've gotten the hospital down to a more manageable level at 400. That's pretty much a wash. We're not gaining anything there. Let's say our sales tax goes down 200,000 and our fish tax comes in 200 over. That's a wash, we're not gaining anything. So what we're dealing with is we're dealing with these little tiny margins that look really big when you see them on paper. But in the overall scheme of things, those are fairly small margins. Understanding that we paid more money here, staff stays the same, and we go back to our goal of 2016 for expenditures for operations, which is 2,021,000, give or take a little bit. A comfortable budget for us would be 10,481,000. You can see, we're a little short on the path that we're on. Ideally, I think we'd like to budget some for capital improvements, little capital stuff, that would take us to about 10.6. That, that's kind of the ideal number in my head for right now, is 10.6 million. And I'll give you some. The uncertainties here again are the needs of the hospital, the school district. We don't know what the fish tax is going to be after this runs out. On the S, the school, the timber receipts, are those going to be incorporated again in '19 and '20? We don't know the answer. We don't know the answers to that. But again, we had talked about from the very beginning that these not be used as standard budgeting items. Now, the fish tax is a standard budget item, but we wanted to take the bump out of that road. Dave helped me understand the differences in the fish tax numbers perhaps, but I wanted to give you, well, I'll be at that in a minute. So ideally, let's say 10.6 million is our number. So we've got to be thinking in our head around 5, 600,000 in either expenditure cuts and a combination of revenues. We are experiencing right now, I would say we're experiencing what I would say, you know, it's a difficult time in terms of staffing. You know, we have difficulty with pool because there just aren't any bodies. Recruitment for the facility superintendent is going to be really interesting. I think we have six applications for that so far, six? So those things are going to be difficult. Here's what we know. I've talked to you about, I'm going to give you a list of everything that we have. In terms of just equipment, this is rolling stock. Stuff that wears out rather quickly, fire trucks, pickups, lawn mowers, whatever. The harbor has $1,045,000 worth of equipment that it needs to fix or replace. Water sewer has 720,000. Refuge has 2.304 million dollars worth of stuff. And the general fund has 7.5 million. We have catalogued those into a list of priority. And we have also developed a list that demonstrates the entire. Now, that's just equipment. When you throw in facility upgrades and you throw in capital items, for example, facility upgrade would be the harbor. Harbor replacement. Facility upgrade would be filling in the Northville for more land. Facility upgrade would be the $10 million for a new water treatment plant. If you, if you figure in all of those needs that have been identified and they're ranging in dire need to a five which could last a few years, we have another 56,390,000 in needs. If you take out the harbor, the Northville, and the water treatment plant, our little facility stuff still adds up to 8.39 million dollars. So between equipment, facilities, and we've got $20 million worth of stuff we need to worry about. So I'll give you an example. Harbor upgrade. Let's just be really conservative and say that on the harbor upgrade, we decided this year, we're going to do the 5-5 next year. That means we're going to put in 5 million and we're going to get the states 5 million on the Tier 1 grant, 10 million. We have to pay 5 million of that back. So we either have to take the 5 million out of our, one of our funds, or we have to borrow the money. Let's assume we borrow the money. We have a new $500,000 a year payment. Payment comes from the harbor. But where do they get the money? Well, they can do a couple of things. They're already depositing $150,000 a year in depreciation funds. So we apply that toward the payment. That won't hurt them a bit. Then we say, we're going to cut the admin fees in half. We get 512 now, we were getting 592, we added 20,000. 176, 180 comes from the harbor. I just rounded it for 180 because it was easy. That's 330. Now, if we cut this admin fees across the board, we're going to take 250,000 out of our budget. And then that number goes down to 9.824 million, which, then we only have 1.4 million for operations. So it has, they're connected. Then we have to raise another 170,000 in higher fees at the harbor to make the $500,000 payment. That's kind of how the difficulty works into it all. Even though harbor is a different thing and it's a different, different fund, we have these issues all along. Refuge, for example, they've got a truck going down, it's going to cost 250,000. They've got a little bit in reserve, but then they're, they're cleaned out, let's say. They have no reserve. Another truck goes out, we already get to the point where you got to haul the steel out. Last bid we had several years ago to haul the steel out was about 267,000 was the little bid. For somebody to come and take all the steel so we have room in the landfill. Because no one wants to buy it, no one will give us money for it. Costs them too much to haul it out. So all these things are connected. So what do we do? The problem with our budget is we are 852,000 down in state revenue. If we had 852,000 in our budget, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But we'd be arguing over somebody's pet peeve project that costs 150,000 to get it done as a priority for the coming year. That would be the fun part of this. But that's not where we're at. The other thing we did is we took property tax. I committed, I thought you committed, that we were going to hold the line on the property tax dollars for the next three years. This is year one of the three years, you're coming up on year two, you're deciding year two here. So at 2.533, the mill rate goes down to 11.81, which is what you see in your packet this evening. Sales tax, we've talked about, we budgeted 3.5. I think next year, based on our experience this year, we'll see. We could go 3.5, that'll, that'll be plus or minus, probably minus. Fish tax, I did some calculations, Dave helped me with the number. 35-year historical average is 667. 90 to 06 is 437. 83 to 89 is 606. Only until you get past '07 does it go up above a million dollars. Prior to '07, there was only one year in the last 30 years that had gone a bunch above a million dollars. That was the year right after the spill, I think. It was 1990 or something. So I think the $800,000 number for the fish tax is very prudent, but we may have a little room there, the time of the payment we've already done. So, you know, what are our sources? Sales tax. Sales tax is very discretionary. You can spend your money here, you can buy online, you can go to Anchorage. But I think it gives you the most discretion as a consumer, that's my opinion. Gives you great discretion as a consumer, how you want to spend your money. And 1% on $20,000 a year costs somebody 200 extra bucks a year, something like that. So it's, it's not a big whack. We talked about alcohol and tobacco taxes, the sin taxes, going up 10%. That would raise 125,000. Motor vehicle fuel tax and the increase to the cap are out, obviously. Home heating fuel, we know that number is $100,000. And then going back to the revenue committee from '13, 12 or '13, I think, when they met '14, they talked about a number of things. One of the things that they talked about was the personal property tax. Depending upon the calculation, the low calculation that they had on the personal property tax over 18 feet, over 18 feet with SCIF, Saners exempted, the way they had it calculated produced 730,000. I said a few weeks ago that, you know, $1,000 a, $1,000 a boat time, 711 boats, 711,000. You know, so there, so there's some room in there to, to consider. I've looked at grocery receipts tax. I believe that the grocery receipts tax is very, is more penalizing to the, the business because it comes off of their grocery receipts and they have to pay every portion of it. It's not necessarily a cost that you can pass along to your consumer, although that's what it is, but it's different than the sales tax because the purchaser doesn't cost the business, they have to collect it, of course. But the consumer makes the determination whether or not they're going to spend the money and pay the tax. And they pay the tax. So it's a little bit different. So that's, that's kind of where we are. You're, you, what you're going to have to help me with is whether you want to be here or whether you want to be here. And.
Yeah, Alan?
Yes?
I get off the phone.
Pardon me?
Uh, I was wondering about coming in Twitter.
Yeah, I can hear you now, did you get the, did you get the email with the board? The text?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, thanks. Did you have a question, James?
It's Kenny.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, you know, I, I heard you throw around personal property tax, but yeah, I definitely wouldn't be interested in pursuing that at all, but I do like the idea of a grocery seat tax because essentially we get rid of all the exceptions all at the same time. Because the businesses, like, and it would start the businesses directly, but then they would choose to increase the cost of their goods to cover it. And it would hit everybody, there wouldn't be tax exempt cards. It's been floated in the past, that was one thing I liked about it. Because we're talking about broadening our tax base to our pie, like we, like I used to use, and I've heard you use before. That would be one way to immediately capture all sales instead of, so half of the sales that we currently capture.
So I'm, I'm listening.
Alan? I guess I'm, I'm kind of in the same, same line of thinking as, as Kenny is. I'm not interested in raising the cost of our local year-round residents any more than already. I'm mostly interested in spreading the, spreading the cost amongst everybody who's here, summertime, wintertime, all the time. But spreading that cost around it. And a preference would be to, if, if we did increase any, any taxes anywhere, would be to cut those off of the property tax personally. I think if, you know, if we can't do it for, for $10 million, we're not going to do it for $10 million for here. Quite, quite honestly. So anyway, I guess that's what I'm, I'm looking for is, is broadening that tax base. Grocery receipts might be the way to do it. I would, you'd certainly want to be careful that you didn't drive more business out of town or make the prices in town higher. But if you're capturing twice as many sales, you know, your rate doesn't have to be as high as it currently is. I'm not interested in raising the, the sales tax percentage, I guess, at this point in time. Although $200 may not be a lot for somebody with $20,000 worth of expenditures. I can, I can tell you that $200 can mean the difference in paying the phone bill or, or paying the electric bill one month out of the year. So it, it does affect some people, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts. We need to find ways to, to broaden that tax base.
We talked about broadening the tax base this year. We tried to do it with three items. We tried to do it with the seasonal differential and the sales tax. That got shot down at the last minute when we were doing the budget. So that put us all over into the other two deals we looked at for spreading the cost out was the motor fuel tax and raising the tax tab. And those two got shot down. We won't go into who, what, when, where, why, or how, but those were our attempts to do that. We all know, I've been looking at the numbers, that we're operating in fairly marginal territory here financially. And we know it's only going to get worse with the funding from the state, funding from the feds. It's not, we haven't hit the bottom of that itch yet. So somewhere or another, I don't know that I'm, I don't know enough about the grocery receipts thing yet to say I'm in favor or not in favor. But I am in favor of replacing the revenues in this year's budget that we've axed out. We've had one year, the first year since we went into this plan with our $800,000 goal for fish tax. We went over it the first year, so everybody got the idea that we don't need this, we're getting rid of it. And it's looking like right now, our next batch of fish tax are probably going to be well short of what we're budgeting with the 800. So that's, I mean, this was all supposed to even out as we went through here, so we've given our first chunk away. So I'm, in some way, shape, or form, we need to replace the dollars in the budget. I mean, this isn't funding for a monarchy or anything like this. The government is not some other entity of its own. It's all of us together, what it costs us to do business and get our services here that we want to live here. So that's kind of what I'm saying.
Alan? A comment that Mark Fornapple made to me one night after a meeting when we were talking about, you know, they were pretty adamantly against the 4 cent per gallon tax, but he said what we should have been doing was raising the fuel warfage fee. That way, again, similar to grocery seat stacks, everybody would have to pay that. Now, his only downfall there was that warfage fees go to the harbor currently. The harbor bills them and they pay the harbor, but that could certainly help us out with our harbor costs if we were to consider, I don't know if that's been looked at or what they, you know, I know that rate is pretty small right now, and to raise a few hundred thousand dollars, it would probably have to be multiples of what it is now, but anyway, that's coming from the fuel company, so it's a thought to look at.
Fine, you know.
Hey, Alan?
You might have, you might have to use the.
Oh, I'll turn it on. It's on now, nine, so.
Yes?
Uh, I was curious, how much, if you had any information on how many total sales happen in Cordova annually in our economy? And, and then what percentage or what portion of those sales are currently taxable under the sales tax structure?
I handed out a sheet, I think on that a while back, and the total volume of sales in Cordova, 90 million. $35 million of those are exempt. I believe the number was.
So, and the follow-up question would be, how many of those $15 million were the sales that happened? Would a grocery seat tax be able to hit? I mean, simple math, 90 million versus 35 million, I mean, we could go down to a 2% grocery seat tax, which would lower the cost of living for the everyday consumer, but then.
but then all those exempted sales would be paying.
I think that, you know, that's the logic of it. I do not either, except for what I've read, I do not know enough about the grocery receipt tax. I mean, even on a, you know, is a church still exempt? Those kinds of things, and you know, I think there's going to be, there's still going to be some folks in there that are not subject to taxation on either purchases or sales, and I don't know the number, so, you know, it's a matter of whether you're shifting. I will express my opinion here. I believe the sales tax, whether others believe that or not, is a reasonably diverse tax. It affects the consumer based upon their tolerance to buy and their income, and I think my experience in other locations has been that small sales tax increases don't affect spending habits tremendously. I think that, I also felt that the motor vehicle fuel tax, perhaps not represented adequately or fairly on our side. I think that was one of the most diverse taxes, the fairest things that you could do in the community. That got every consumer who has to use fuel, and that's everybody, as far as I know. I mean, unless you have a bicycle, and so it was very fair. I think the characterization of how that impacted a particular provider was represented well from their perspective, but I believe it was not correct in how it was represented. So in that state, we had an opportunity very early on to present our case, and we chose not to file the paperwork so bad on us, but nevertheless, I think there's an argument for every tax that you can put on this board, there's going to be somebody who thinks it's unfair. We, you know, we just legalized marijuana, and we asked, you know, given the opportunity to tax that, we chose not to tax it because we didn't want to hurt the startup of a business in any way. And those are the decisions that you have to make all the time. Two things I know for sure, our expenses aren't going to go down from an operations standpoint, and there are other entities that we help support that eventually will be asking for additional funding. And when we hit those, we either have to have it in our, you know, our reserve or somewhere. I'm going to, I'm going to follow up what I said to you that meeting or so ago. I said you have great pressure on your shoulders because you're responsible for the well-being of almost everyone, you know, in terms of services and road plowing and all water, sewer, all the stuff that goes on. And I think sometimes that creates difficulty for people in making, well, I've said it before, taking a little bit of risk. And I feel like we've slid a little bit. We went from a place where we were sort of rejoicing and, not rejoicing, but we were embracing risk. Now we're sort of, that's a little bit tougher for us right now because of the reality of the financial pressure. So I think, you know, I appreciate your statement about if we can't do it for 10, we're not going to do it for 10.4. I would obviously disagree with that. I would say that for 10.481 million, I can do everything that we're doing and more, and I could do that year after year after year with a little bit of comfort, that if something goes wrong, like a $12,000 heater in the police station, I can fix it and not have to worry about it. In the cases where I have to spend $12,000 now, I have one account that had a little bit of money in it for us to do those things, and it was other department, when we did the budget, we put, there was $77,000 rather than reappropriate 50 of that or something. We parked that money in there, and if it had not been for that, I would have had to come back to you to ask for $12,000 to fix the fire department. I would have had to ask for a couple of other things to be able to repair things around here. And that's the thin line what we're on. We've talked a lot about personnel, and the cost of personnel, you know, our total cost is 5.8 million, 4.2 million's in the general fund, the rest is in the enterprise funds, and they pay for those. Every position we reduce, and we may be, we may come to that, every position that we reduce reduces our effectiveness to provide services. And that's another thing that you have to be prepared. The pool right now, for example, we can't run the pool all we want to because there just simply aren't any bodies to do it. That gets tough.
I just wanted to mention, Councilman Allison had mentioned warfage, and he's right. I think somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000 in warfage was raised, so to get up to like $330,000, like the taxes that were overturned, you're going to have to crank up, you're going to have to charge eight times as much warfage. And one of the, when I was on council before, when we decided to sell the AML land, that was one of the concerns. Most of our freight's coming across the Alaska Rainline stock, and that's, they own that dock, there's no warfage there. So the bulk of our freight isn't even, even if we raised warfage, basically we'd be putting a lot on one, you know, vendor and the city dock. So, I mean, if you look at all the warfage we'd have to charge to make that up, it's going to have the same or even a worse impact, I think, than, for instance, the fuel rising. So, Councilman Garnett?
Boom. I don't understand, warfage for purposes of fuel and warfage and the motor fuel tax are basically going to hit the same entity, and the dollar through the dollars, whether you put them on the front end or the back end. So, I don't see where we're going to get any support from Shoreside to raise the kind of dollars that we're talking about raising.
The argument was that people can't claim tax exempt from the warfage because that's based upon the bulk.
Yeah.
And they claim the exemption on everything else.
They're the only ones paying warfage right now. So, all the dollars...
Did they lower their price four cents a gallon after the election?
There were some reductions. Yeah, it did drop.
I really don't want to go there on all this, but all I'm saying is, if we're, I mean, if we do warfage, we're basically putting the same amount of revenue generation on the same entity that was going to be collecting the tax otherwise, so it's going to be no different there. Their bottom line's going to be their bottom line.
You know, and I think we need to really be cognizant of the fact that we have to separate what we're trying to raise revenue for. If a warfage goes to the harbor, it certainly helps us do a harbor project in terms of a payment, but it doesn't help the general fund.
Well, it also puts it all, it's kind of, it's a different proportion because it's all, you don't have the sales tax cap for the tender purchases and the processor purchases, and it makes them pay a huge share of that. And I know council looked at that when they considered those other taxes, but... So, any other questions or comments or thoughts, council? I think what Manager Lanning was asking us, where between the 9.8 and the 10.5? Does council, you know, what are your thoughts? Councilman Jones?
Yeah, last thought I would say is, I would personally be in favor of pursuing the tax as well. I remember one of the presentations last year, I believe it was, we had the police chief, Mr. Hicks, come in, and he was discussing about how many of the calls are alcohol-related and what kind of tax to put on our hospitals and our EMS and police services. So those are a big portion of our budget currently. Yeah, I would be in favor of calling that, killing brick ropes.
What does the other answer certainly ever asking? Go ahead.
Well, the question was, for the purposes of formulating budgetary documents to start working on for this year, are we in favor of going for a 9.8 million budget, or are we in favor of going for a 10.5 million budget? Was what this whole thing came down to. So, the 9.8 really does not get us anyplace. We're kind of sitting there spinning our wheels, deferring maintenance as it is, and that's even below where we're at, where we did last year's budget at. So, I'm not in favor of taxing myself anymore than I absolutely have to, but I do want the city to run fine. I want to get the services I'm getting, so I'm going to speak in favor of the 10.5 million budget.
You know, your highlight year was 2015. That was the top of the, that was the top of the mountain. You had the most disposable income, all the state funds were intact, everything was good. I think you had 62, 66, half back then, and so we've been on a decline. You know where this ends up? I don't know. I think Jeff said it about, you know, additional state funding, and, you know, they've got a huge purse problem, and they have some other problems, and one of the easiest places always historically I've seen to go is go to the local governments and put the burden on them, and not that that's necessarily what's going to do. For example, our state debt service reimbursement in 15 was 961,716 now, 250,000 bucks. We've happened, we've been able to maintain some of the other sources a little bit better, but our general share revenue for the jail has gone from 195 to 130, and our pension state relief, excuse me, went from 675 to 113. I think that, plus our, you know, those are, there's 113, there's another 240, and 716. So there's another $960,000 that could be extracted from us to hit rock bottom. Hate to be the pessimist, but, you know, we obviously have to prepare for these things and keep our other entities whole in this as well, because our, you know, we've asked the school district, for example, to accept less money for the three-year period, and whether they can maintain that or not, we don't know. So far, they've been able to do that, and have not requested other than the gym floor. We've asked the hospital to accept money, and, you know, it's nip and tuck over there. Sure would be comfortable to have a little bit more, or be prepared to transfer money out of the permanent fund to take care of some things. I mean, the choice is yours. Councilman Garnett?
I just have one question, was going to ask it earlier, but I thought we were 575 from last year's budget.
We are. Yeah, I just wrote 625 because that was in the budget book, and that's just how the numbers were issued, were added up for me, but it's 575. We're going to spend the 625 because on the UPS, it's going to be at 625. And so if we just say the budget is 625, then they're going to be able to, we don't necessarily have to reappropriate any money for that, but we want to, you know, keep you informed of that. James, you've been trying to say something.
Well, as you say, it's, I'm not saying against the score to CCMC, but it's not 1.5, it's 1.635 from one end, and then you pay for it. It's like, they're not operating on this, that's just our numbers, that's what we're counting for, we're trying to make that. Personally, I'd like to see, we're asking a lot of our entities to rethink how we're doing this, and I think we're in that too. I'd like to see this grocery receipt tax explored. I'd like to see what it is for 9.824, what percentage we can get across the board and get these exemptions off, or what we can find with 10.481, and see what we can do. You know, I don't mind seeing a church pay tax. I don't go to churches, but I'm paying for the same things that everyone there. I would also argue that the less someone pays on the sales tax overall, the more they can pay, or something like that, or, you know, it's, one way or another, I'm going to live here and I'm going to pay for it, I feel like. So I'm just wanting to know if everybody else currently isn't, is going to, or how we're going to explore that. But personally, that's what I'd like to see explored, is a gross receipt tax for these two numbers that you're looking at, or looking at.
We have to have a public hearing, right?
Yes.
If I could just add one more thing before we stop? What I'd like to do at some point is try to reach a consensus of what the council would like to move forward with, because as we pursue individual revenue items or other issues, of course, our legal fees are tremendous, and every time we do one of these, we've got to have an attorney involved to prepare ordinances, do those kinds of things. So if we can reach consensus, then we only have to do it once, and we have consensus then. You're all on the same page, so just my suggestion, but as always, I will do whatever you want me to do.
I think it's also important to, I think, council, but I know recognizes this, but I hear comments from the public as well, operating budget is how you keep the lights on, and that's just operating your business day to day, that should have your maintenance and kind of keep your same baseline, but capital budgets is where you, you know, can actually change your business model. In other words, you know, investing in a harbor renovation or expansion or adding new services or opportunities there can support your base industry and generate more revenue. Investing in something like a Crater Lake or a new infrastructure that handles your trash differently, that gives you some efficiencies that you can, those are investments. I mean, you're spending money, but you're getting a return on that that can take you to a different place, so that's different than just trying to repair things to keep your business model the same way it is now. Okay, any final comments on the revenue discussion? Okay, hearing ended. I'll now call the City Council Public Hearing, it's ordered, at 6:49. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
James Burton is absent. Ken Jones? Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer is absent. David Allison?
Here.
James Wiest?
Here.
The quorum of council.
Okay, so the public hearing items are, first ordinance 1169, it's on page eight of the packet. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with Saddle Point Machine LLC, which includes an option to purchase described as Lot 3, Block 5, Northville Development Park. The second item is Resolution 06-18-16, and that is on page 60 of the packet, and it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska.
60 of the packet. And it's a resolution of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, setting the mill rate for the 2018 tax year. So would anyone in the public like to speak to either of those items in the public hearing? Just approach the microphone and speak to them.
Second.
Have a motion second to recess. Fall in favor.
Aye.
Kilo stand recess for about seven minutes. Public hearing on the two items, ordinance 1169 regarding authorization of the city manager to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with Saddle Point Machine LLC on lot three, block five, and North Phil Development Park. And on resolution 06-18-16, setting the mill rate for the 2018 tax year. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to testify on those items? Move to adjourn. Okay, seeing none. Have a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll adjourn the public hearing. And we just got a couple of minutes before the regular council meeting. To order at seven o'clock. If you'd join me in pledging the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We could call the roll, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
James Burton is absent. Ken Jones. Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer is absent. David Allison.
Here.
James Weis.
Here.
It's a quorum of council.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host?
Aye.
Okay, the agendas will stand as submitted. Does council have any conflicts of interest to disclose on the items on the agenda? Hearing none. Communications buy-in petitions from visitors. We don't have any guest speakers scheduled for tonight. So are there any audience comments on any agenda items to see? Okay, seeing none. Chairperson is representative of boards and commissions, CCMC.
Good evening. The hospital is still open. I knew that was a question a while back. But the, the issue that caused all that uproar was actually something we've been working on for over a year now with various entities. So there was never an issue to where the hospital was going to close or anything like that. The, the issue ultimately boiled down to the FCC trying to figure out how to reduce the expenses of this big federal grant program that ultimately pays for the majority of our telecommunications bill here at CCMC. So you've probably seen in the various news articles, some parts of it. And every once in a while, somebody has gotten something right in there. And we're, we're still open. We actually already have bids in to replace Alaska Communications should that need arise. And we, we're currently under contract with them and through, through November of this year. So everything there is still a go and we don't expect any cuts in telecommunications services there. We're also working on our electronic health record for the hospital side. We have a go-live date of August the 1st for this new system, which should help us improve our, a lot of our operations from the revenue cycle side of it, along with the documentation on the clinical side. So we're spending a lot of time and effort on that for staff training and building the various components of that system. So that process is still moving forward. The UPS project for the CT scanner is in the works now. The equipment is here. Most of the equipment is here. We have one more piece that has been built and is shipped now. And hopefully within a couple of weeks, we'll have the other components here ready to flip the switch and protect the CT scanner. We have a new board member for the CCMC authority. At the meeting last week, Gary Graham was selected by the current board to fill the term that became available when Amanda Weis stepped down. And he will be in that role until the election next March. We also now have a new vacancy on the hospital board with Sally Bennett leaving. So the vacancy we had last time, there were actually three people that had put in their interest for it. And we expect that the board will fill this other vacancy at the June meeting later this month. So then hopefully we'll be back to full board and have no other vacancies anytime soon. We also have a new CFO, actually a returning CFO. Lee Bennett is now our interim CFO at the hospital. He has been here a couple of times before and is filling in for Lee Holter, who just left actually today and is moving back closer to his family down in North Dakota. So other than the budget detail, I'll leave it at that unless there are any questions from the council.
Any questions, council? Okay, thank you.
And are there any questions on the detailed budget for the hospital that you'd like for me to answer or leave? You've done more than I do.
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate it. It was a long time. Hopefully next year's will be quicker.
Our hope is with this new EHR system, we'll be able to do it when we actually have the budget submitted. The current system that we have doesn't have that capability.
And the pharmacy is doing?
Pharmacy is doing much better than we expected at this point. And we're above, well above what our expectations were in our proposal. You know, we had estimated about an 18-month timeframe to get to a break even point. And we're pretty close to that now.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Cordova School District.
School is not open, but that's on purpose. I guess a couple of things. We'll be hearing a second reading of our budget next week. And we feel like we're on track for a good plan for next year. I think, I believe the city manager is aware that they found asbestos in the gym floor. So they're working on a plan for abatement. There is room in what we budgeted for, I believe, to take care of it unless the bill for that is way more than anybody expects. So I think it'll be fine. And again, we really appreciated the confidence the city council showed in just approving that money and letting us go forward when we had an opportunity to do it quickly and a little more cheaply. So thank you for that. I think beyond that, there's not too much more to report unless people have questions.
Any questions, council? Councilman Jones online.
Hello?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And with no school, we don't have a student council representative with us. So on the, no items on the consent calendar this time. So we just have minutes of May 16th. Move to approve the minutes of May 16th, council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Host?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved as submitted. We don't have any bids to consider tonight. So mayor's report I'm going to give verbally, I was in Fairbanks last week for a national lab day. I guess I'll just mention it was a pretty big event. There were 13 or 14 of the leaders of the 17 national laboratories and four or five of the undersecretaries of Department of Energy there. And Cordova was mentioned in just about every panel and presentation there. Some of the work that we're doing on smart grids, the city's participated in that a little bit as well. So it's, I think, a really good visibility for the community. I, on very, very short notice, invited council and other stakeholders out to the Crater Lake site because we had a helicopter become unexpectedly available. I try to give more notice on those, but because of the complexity of usually the helicopters here for another purpose, or CEC is doing some work that gets scheduled on short notice and weather patterns, many times we'll try to kind of give an advance warning and then, but it really boils down to kind of 24 hours notice most of the time because they get canceled with the last minute or become available at the last minute. It's kind of like that for this Friday. I think there's going to be a little window of a couple hours, but until the drillers for Shover Point and other things get worked on it, I really won't know. So, but I know several of you were able to get up there, less than a quorum, this Monday and see the site. I think that's important for the city, the community to understand the opportunities and challenges and risks involved. So CEC will be submitting a letter of interest to purchase city property where our current diesel power plant is. So that may be on a future agenda. So that may be on a future agenda for council consideration. That lease is expiring the end of July, I think, so time is short. This mention on the timber receipts tax, I know we've looked into that two or three times now with the State Department of Revenue. And there are some nuances and itches in that option that are very unattractive. I just don't remember off the top of my head what they are. But I think even recently, Bitney has researched that for us. So I'll try to uncover that information and circulate it back to council. Copper River Nuvos this weekend. So we'll have visitors in town. And if you don't have tickets, I don't know if there's any available, but that'll be here in the Cordova Center Saturday evening this year. I just got a notice that the Warda Bill, which is the Waters and Resources Development Act, passed the House. So that's one of the three big funding opportunities for harbor and waterfront renovations. And the other being the Tiger Grant and then the state's tier grants. And really appreciate, we had an applicant for consideration for the council for library board, but we still have a vacancy on Planning and Zoning Commission and also on the Parks and Recreation Board. Those are both very active and important boards for the community and would encourage the public to consider volunteering for those, particularly if you're users of the many opportunities through Parks and Rec, through Bedarkie or Swimming Pool or community parks and camps and programs. Those are all under a lot of budget pressure and it helps to have the community engaged and communicate what they want for, you know, for the community. And Planning and Zoning, of course, is very important for the planning and development of our community's future. So I would appreciate interest from the community in those and thank all the people that already serve in those roles. So that's all I had for this evening unless there's any questions. Okay, thank you. Manager's report?
As you know, I'll be out of town from the 8th through the 18th. Chief Hicks will be sitting in while I'm gone. We're going to, we've invited the state dam inspector to be here on the 17th of July on a Tuesday evening from 6:00 to whenever to do a presentation and a Q and A. Council is interested in getting some feedback, third-party feedback on the feasibility study on Crater Lake and some expertise on dam safety. I've had a conversation with the state dam inspector and he really is upon the cymbal and the process of an application really is sort of the eyes for, in terms of the public, for the feasibility of a project. So I had a very enlightening conversation with him and we're trying to schedule that right now. So if you have any input on that, I'd be happy to listen, but we're trying to get that scheduled for the 17th. Also, there's a, we've been invited to a borough meeting that includes Valdez, Whittier, and a variety of communities, smaller communities, going to be held in Girdwood on the 20th of June. And as I've indicated, I have some quirks in my schedule perhaps. And we have a council meeting that night. But if there's anybody that would like to attend that, let us know and we'll make those travel arrangements for you to go to that. And I'll send, I can copy you all on the email that goes with that. So with that, I'll be happy to respond to any questions. All of our RFPs are still out. We're waiting on responses. Our response to, for example, Weston's position, I think, is a little low for us. So we're struggling with some of those personnel issues here as well. So, yes, sir?
Just a question on Borough. Who's facilitating this meeting?
Candace. What's your name, Candace?
Pleasant. It's actually the city of Girdwood.
Yeah, the city of Girdwood.
Community of Girdwood, which is interesting because I don't think they've ever really been in the conversation before, but they're, they recognize they're 20 miles closer to Prince William Sound than they are to Anchorage. And they facilitated this. They're offering lodging at Aliosa Lodge if the communities will just pay their airfare. I really feel like I've been out of town a lot. I want to be at that June 20th meeting and have other commitments at CEC here in town as well. But I'd really encourage either city staff or vice mayor or some kind of participation. It's a big conversation and involves every, you know, a tax base. And Cordova's looked at it many times. The interesting nuance, I'll say that I have talked to Valdez mayor about it a couple times and they are interested in participating in, attending this and being in the conversation. And that is new because they've always fiercely resisted even discussing Borough. And now it seems like their current mayor and council are willing to consider it. Maybe they're concerned about the future, their oil pipeline or whatever. But Bitney, again, sent a lot of, we've had Borough assessment studies done two or three or four times, and he sent a big volume of information. I'll circulate, forward that around the council.
Yeah, I have both of those out from the last time we talked about the Borough. And so those are available if you want to get a copy. We won't make a copy unless you request one. Actually, we could probably scan it and put it online.
So that's something on the pending agenda to, in our concurrence, to send someone on council or city staff or both to that. I don't think it's a, I don't think we want to not have a seat at that table.
So what we'll probably do is go ahead and make the travel arrangements and we'll plan on sending somebody, whoever that is. I'm intending to be back on the 18th, obviously available on the 18th and 20th, but also have that council meeting, so we'll figure it out. Just let me know if you want to go.
Any other questions for councilman, manager lining? Councilman Ellis?
What's the status on the Northfield boat launch ramp? Just sitting there? Is there waiting for us to give it money or was there any insurance on that or?
Well, I think there was insurance on it. As far as I remember, there's a claim in on this, but a claim in on it, but I don't know the status of it. I think we have already received the money, but I'm not sure. Off guard on that one.
Get an update on that?
Sure.
Other questions, council?
I have, what's the status on the sidewalk, Adams Street sidewalk and the path that we should get on it?
About to bid, just went out yesterday.
The Adams Street project just went out to bid yesterday from the state. Is that correct?
Correct. And the paths on the corner, comfortable curb, but we're kind of grading them on some bits with asphalt.
Yeah, and with respect to some other projects, we're trying to get, we'll get some bids on terms of asphalt with respect to that, that patch, but I don't know the exact timeframe of it. Funding? Do we have any funding? No funding, but we'll figure that out.
Any other questions, council?
Hey, actually, I'm going to revert to mayor's report for just a second. Just today, DOT engineers called yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, but we met out at the Power Creek Project Site and they have a plan and a design and they have their hydrologists and their staff here. They're looking at raising the grade on the section of road that's watching out by five feet and doing that work in 2019. So that's a, it'll be a fairly big project and we're working on some of that issues there, so. There's some opportunities there, I think, for the Forest Service, Cordova Electric Corporations to assist that project and help pave the way for that, so.
Clerk's report?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Any questions, council? Put the deputy clerk on the spot. Okay, hearing none. Ordinances and resolutions. First item is ordinance 1169, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with Saddlepoint Machine LLC, which includes an option to purchase described as Lot 3, Block 5, Northfield Development Park. This is a second reading, so it would be a roll call vote. Move ordinance 1169? Sorry? We have a motion and a second. Councilman Ellis, would you like to speak to motion?
We've been through this one several times. I'd just like to thank Mr. Brown for his willingness to invest in Cordova and wish him well with his project.
Further discussion, council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
James Wees?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yeah.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. David Allison?
Yes.
James Burton is absent. Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is ordinance 1170. And that's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova Municipal Code 5.40.010 to adopt a 1/2% increase to the sales tax levied by the city of Cordova. This is a first reading, it would be a voice vote. Counsel?
What is our ordinance? Move ordinance 1170?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman Gard, discussion?
Yeah, we're a little bit short on dollars here this year after the referendum votes we had. So this is strictly to replace budget dollars. I don't think the vote of the public was to try to cut the budget by any amount. It was a vote that they didn't want those specific taxes. And this ordinance is strictly to replace the revenues lost by that.
Further discussion, council? Councilman Jones?
Yeah. So I like this idea better than the other two options that we discussed last fall. However, I still don't think that it's the best way to move forward. So I'm kind of on the fence on if I want to support this tonight or not.
Further discussion, council? Councilman Ellis?
Yeah, I guess I'm not in favor of this at this point in time. I'd like to leave it open for consideration when we, when we do our budget here in a few months. But I think that we've had, though we understand we don't want to count revenues above or below our targets and any unforeseen revenues towards that because we have other needs. I think at this point in time, it's anti-tax is on the citizen's mind and it'll just end up for, again, if we, if we don't give a little bit of time for, for relaxation a little bit. I don't think this kills our budget for this year.
Councilman Gard?
I mean, basically, spending any above and beyond revenues that we receive from others, whether it was excess fish tax, which it looks like this next year coming up, we may not be any place close to the 800 again, but it will probably be in the other direction if the flat keeps acting like it has been. I mean, we picked the 800,000 as a number to go with to ride through highs and lows and to decide the first year out that it was an erroneous number and spend any excesses ahead of time is kind of short-sighted. I mean, the budget we came up with last winter was in no way, shape, or form an excessive budget. It was kind of a bare-bones budget. And now we're operating under a bare-bones budget. So it's just more Robin Peter to pay Paul. We watched that happen in the state with deferred maintenance in the 80s and they just don't want to see us do it to ourselves here now. So I'm not in favor of taxes, but I am in favor of running a community like it could be run financially.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jones?
Well, just, you know, we just had a pretty good discussion on revenue option. I don't know if I want to kill this tonight. I'd kind of like to keep seven options moving forward as we continue our budget discussions like Mr. Allison said. I just don't want to kill it tonight, but is there a way we can refer this back to staff with the rest of council guidance there and move to refer back to staff?
So there's a couple of things here and I think council wanted this on this agenda. If council approves this, it would go to a second reading, so you may have more or less councilmen at the next meeting. Or, you know, if you vote it down, I think at this point, it's just a majority of council present because it's a first reading. And if it passed, then, like I say, it would go to a second reading. If it doesn't pass, then it would just be a matter of, you know, addressing this in the budget discussions or some other fashion, so. But it, council can certainly refer it to staff, but manager lining?
Well, I just, you know, the school, the timber receipts are going to, we have not received those yet. Our real issue in terms of cash flow, not making a statement about the appropriate amount and all those things, you know, we've talked before about having about 5.7 million that we're running on constantly. We haven't received any revenue since last October of any substantial amount and we won't really receive any till August. So we almost operate a whole year on very little revenue until we get to August. And that, that just affects our cash flow at the end of the day. So I, I don't, you know, I think the fish tax from '17 is, is, 2017 certainly helped our cash flow a little bit. I've asked John, as soon as we get the timber receipts, to give us an update on where our cash flow is.
Did that answer your question, Councilman Jones? Yeah, no, I was, I was kind of skipping back to basically just trying to lay out some of the options, I guess, so. Further discussion, council?
I, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if I agree with this increase or not, but I am going to vote yes on it tonight to move it forward. I think everyone's going to have a clear decision on whether they want this or not. And I think if we give it two more weeks and it goes to a second reading, I'm going to, we're going to get a lot more public comment to, and be able to take a lot better polls. So I'll vote yes on this tonight, I'm not sure where I'll go after that.
Okay. No further comments, council? Councilman Meyer?
I'm in the same vote as James on that one. I'll vote it forward for tonight, but just to keep it as an option, not in favor of raising sales tax in any way. I thought the motor fuel tax was really a good way to help spread it out, but that is not there anymore. So we need to figure something out for this budget and keep the city working.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries. Next item is resolution 06-18-16, Resolution Next item is resolution 06-18-16, resolution of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, setting the mill rate for the 2018 tax year. And that's on page 60 of the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Allison?
I move resolution 061816 as presented in our packet. Second?
Have a motion in a second. Councilman Allison, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, this is the number we budgeted for. Certainly, we could make up our 300,000 here if that was a desire, but in the past, we've always tried to stick by what we budgeted and, and I think we've got a good plan with, with it going forward, so. So I'm supporting this, this 11.81 mills.
Yeah. Further discussion, council?
We were only thinking agreement that we'd set a monetary value that we're, for dollars we were trying to raise for the next three years. The mill rate could float depending upon what appraisals were, but those are the dollars we wanted to raise on property taxes and that, that's it's the same number, so it's what we all agreed to before.
Other discussion, council? Okay, so setting the mill rates, a roll call vote, so, roll call, please.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
James Burton is absent. Ken Jones?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So the mill rate is set for 2018. No unfinished business on the agenda, so under new business, we have a council action on disposal and method of disposal for 1,203 square feet on the Cordova High School campus, page 62.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Allison?
I move to dispose of approximately 1,203 square footage of instructional space on the Cordova Junior, Senior High School campus as outlined in Cordova Municipal Code 5.22.060. Be by negotiating an agreement with the University of Alaska, lease or purchase the property.
A second?
Okay, have a motion in a second. Discussion, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, this agreement, basically with maybe slightly different terms, has been in the place for several years now and it seems to work good for the, for the school district and the city to have that facility in town. And the school board has passed a resolution recommending renewal of the lease, so I don't see any reason to stand in the way of that.
Yeah, Councilman Gard?
Just clarification, we are only talking about leasing. We're not talking about sale, because you mentioned sale in the motion.
That's, that's the way the wording is in our code.
I think, I think disposal has that. So that's lease.
Lease or purchase.
Yeah.
We're only looking to lease.
It will be the lease. The school's not going to sell any of their billys. Or any of our billys.
Okay, good clarification. Further discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I'm asking for it.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jones, I missed that last part. Was that a vote in favor?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay, great. Well, I'll record it as such. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is council concurrence of Mayor Copeland's appointments to fill vacancies on the library board, planning commission and parks and rec. We used to have one appointment in front of council now for the library board and I wasn't able to speak to the individual. They were concerned about the meeting nights because they are committed on the EMS, but the meetings aren't scheduled on Thursday nights, so that won't conflict. So they are still very interested in serving on that board.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Allison?
Move to concur with council, with Mayor Copeland's appointment to the library board.
Second?
You have a motion in second. Would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I think we need to, we need to get some recruiting out there for, for some of these other boards. If we get the, get those out in radio land to volunteer for some of these positions, it'd be appreciated.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have a vacancy filled on library. So I think we are at audience participation. I'm sorry, pending agenda. So we had mentioned the June 20th, I think manager Lanning is looking at that. If, I guess, just for the record, are you interested in going? Mr. Mayor Allison, or, okay, so.
I think I'm interested.
Counsel? Okay. Would counsel, I guess, yeah, we could, if counsel would like to send Councilman Meyer to participate? Is there any objection or?
No.
Okay, I think that's good for the record to do that, so, thank you. Other items on pending agenda, I think we've mentioned a, on July 17th, potentially a community presentation by dam, state dam safety. Other pending agenda items, council?
Just for the, for the record, for, we talked about it earlier before the meeting, but in the calendar, it's got C T C's meeting still, still at the end of the month. They're, they're now the second Wednesday of every month. That's Cordova telephone meetings.
That's right. They did that to kind of, it was on the fourth Wednesday or the last Wednesday, so it was the same evening as Cordova Electric operative meetings. So their C T C's moving into second Wednesday so that members can participate in either meeting and so we can participate in each other's meetings, so.
Mr. Mayor? So on the 17th of July, you had a, the state dam inspector?
Yeah, that's just tentative, so.
That's a Tuesday, it's not a Thursday, because we have council minutes.
Yeah, that's right.
But this is intended to be?
It's intended to be a, a public meeting.
A public?
There we go. So is it June or July that we generally decide as council whether they want to have the second meeting in the month?
It has to be done on the first meeting of any month, is what our code says.
Okay, so if you're going to skip a meeting, it would be the first meeting in the month?
No, you have to have it first.
Okay, you have to have the first one. So it's just the third Wednesday, second meeting, it's optional, so.
Yeah, you have the, well, my security folks come in.
Yeah. So June 20th, so just be thinking ahead to July meeting.
And the first Wednesday in July is the fourth.
It's actually the day of the 4th of July?
Yeah.
So.
We won't have a quorum that day.
Pretty sure of it.
I know, but Dave, she's got that on here, so.
It's, it's supposed to be the next available day that a quorum is available by code, but.
Okay, we can, we can put that on the, I want to put that on the June 20th pending agenda, just for council to, I discussed the first meeting in July. Anything else for pending agenda? Okay, hearing none. Now we get to audience participation. If anyone would like to speak to any of the items on the agenda or in general? Okay, seeing none. Council comments, I'll start to my left, Councilman Wees.
Thank you everyone for coming and thank you to Sherman Powell. Seen him around a few times, really glad that he's still going to serve and he's reading it down. That's, that's great. Thank you everyone for coming.
Okay, go to the phone, Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you for coming out, participating on such a sunny day. Sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Okay, Councilman Gard?
Echo the comments ahead of me and nothing else, or nothing else besides that.
Okay, Councilman Meyer?
Yeah, thanks for coming, everybody, and it's a gorgeous day, so can't wait to go back outside.
Councilman Allison?
Ditto, thank you.
Okay, one item left on the agenda.
Mr. Junior, second?
Hold on.
Councilman, manager Lanning, sir?
We do have an.
Oh, we have an executive session. Sorry, we do.
I'll be very brief.
That's right. Sorry.
Party goober.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So we have an executive session.